Good evening, welcome to tonight's meeting. Vanessa, please call the roll.
Here, Davis.
Here. Vice Chair Milliken?
Here.
Professor D'Varity?
D'Varity here.
Secretary Hatcher? Trustee Fleming?
Here.
Trustee McKnight Morton?
Yes.
Trustee Millschey?
Here.
Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Tab A is the recommendation for the Board of Trustees to approve the minutes of May 21st, 2024, monthly meeting, and June 11th, 2024, special meeting as submitted. Do I hear a motion?
Who moved?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Moving on to citizens participation, WCC Education Association, Mrs. Fornier?
Good evening. As we move towards the end of June and the end of the fiscal year, we're looking ahead to fall with both excitement and trepidation. It is always exciting to start a new school year and meet new students, but with many ongoing changes at the college and new initiatives, there's some anxiousness about how everything is going to play out for the fall semester. So if you remember, a couple of months ago, I shared with you a plan for the testing center to include more of our online classes. And I wanted to first thank Dr. Blanca, Dr. Tucker, and Provost Blakey for working towards a solution for some of our classes. We will be able to have our calculus one, two, and three courses use the testing center in the fall. So we are excited about that. It's a big step forward, and we appreciate the support of the college and the board. Although this solution does not encompass all of the online classes, we are hopeful that we can still come to a resolution for all of our online students to have the same access across campus. We believe that increasing access to the testing center along with the Online Proctoring Service Honor Lock is a comprehensive plan to meet the needs of our online students. There's still a little sense of uncertainty and apprehension around the Canvas migration. While the online class migration has begun and we will be piloting in the fall 2024 semester, there is concern about the lack of support for all of our on-campus and virtual classes that are not part of the formal migration. Since the COVID pandemic, the faculty have created robust Blackboard sites for our on-campus and virtual classes. At this point, there is no instructional support that will be offered by CITL for any section modalities other than the online courses. Faculty will be on their own to recreate, revise, and reformat these sites. We're hoping to get support from the college to help with the migration of all of our classes from Blackboard to campus. And finally, as we come to the end of the fiscal year, we're excited to report that Dr. Tucker met his timeline of hiring 13 new faculty. So we're super excited about that, new faculty across all of the divisions at the college. So we have new people in every area. We can't thank enough all of the deans, faculty, and staff that served on committees, organized interviews, and worked to find and hire these outstanding new colleagues. We look forward to adding to our outstanding instructors and looking forward to the next generation of WCC faculty. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any public comments? Hey, if so, when I call your name, please come to the mic. Jeremy Haley? When you approach the mic, you have three minutes to deliver your comments.
Well, thank you, and for letting me speak. Just like, you know, the last time I ran into you guys, I wasn't feeling well. My neck was broken in a automobile accident. So when I tell people that, I just saw a few of you jump back and saw the whites of your eyes like, you know, I had some kind of sickness or something. Because I wasn't feeling good. When it does occur, three things, I can tell you what my right side of face looks like. Droopy dog, the cartoon character on my right side of my face will droop. Or it looks like my right side of my face, I'm having a stroke. Or the other one is, you know, Raiders of the Lost Ark, where they open up the ark and you see the guy's face start melting? That kind of, that's, you know, when I tell people that, it's not that I'm sick, it's just I don't want people to get the wrong impression or say, what's going on there? So that's why. And what brought me here tonight is, last summer, and gave me the courage to start speaking out at city council meetings and coming to meetings, is I was hit by a water bottle from a moving car while living in Dexter outside the Avalon Housing Project, riding my bike home from the grocery store. That revelation gave me where it hit me. You could have done one of two things if it would have done it. Would have paralyzed me completely or wind up killing me because my neck's already broke. So that actually gave me the courage to say, you know, I'm tired of sitting here seeing what's going on, and something needs to be said. On that note, what brings me here happened to me in 2007, January, here at Washington Community College, where I worked here, the Department of Biology and the Facilities Management. I went to the board meeting of that year, 2007, to talk. I was taking care of the plants. I gave Facilities and Management a budget of like $7,500 for all the plants and maintenance for whatever. They did an outside thing for a company, they gave them a budget of $15,000. Well, from my time I worked here, I learned quite a few things. And a lot of people know it. And when I went to that meeting, at that time, President Whitworth came to me before the meeting and said, let's talk before you talk to the board about this topic. Two weeks later, I was called to the Dean of Math and Natural Sciences, where I was told my grant, which I was being paid for, was reallocated, essentially fired. Why? Because I was going to talk about the policy that was in the departments, the unofficial policy, spend it or lose it. I said, why do you guys have to spend more when I can save you money? They obviously wanted to spend it. And my time here, I saw this college refloor a building twice in a year's time. Waste of money. And why I'm talking about this now is, I know that if departments come back and say, hey, we spent all the money, does anybody question and say, do you really need to spend all that money? And at some point, do they spend it? And get to that point and go, well, we spent it. What else do we get? Anything beyond that point is fraud against the taxpayers. And if you want to be a good steward to the community and the taxpayers, you all should consider that. And I do have a solution. If I have time to just take a minute, is the one variable rate that can change is tuition. Say that you get your, I know revenue in is equal expenditures out. That's how I've learned it over the years, how things work. After some point in there, it just becomes fraud because they just need to spend it. I don't know why everybody says there's a $400 hammer that the military needs to buy. But the solution is, you bring in the money. And at that point, tell the departments they don't have to spend it. And if they come back with less, that you don't go, oh, you don't need that extra money? Or we're just going to take it out of your budget. And that's how it's been weaned into these people, hey, you have to spend it or you'll lose it. That needs to stop. And take that extra money you saved, build up an extra fund to cover any and all expenses for emergency for the college for a year and a half, too. Set it there and build an extra fund for the departments if in case need any extra big equipment or anything there. Then after that, the money, you would have excess. You can look at the tuition and go, that's our variable rate. We got excess money this year. We can take that tuition and actually lower it to counter that.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Vanessa, were there any written communications? Okay, thank you. Special reports first is HBCU Day update by Dean Reed.
Good evening, trustees. It's good to see you all again. This year, I'm here, today, I'm here to talk about the HBCU Pathway Initiative and some progress we've made over the last couple of years. So just to refresh everyone's memory, in fall 2021, we launched the HBCU Pathway Initiative. And this was simply because we wanted to provide an alternative pathway that could support our values of access, success, and equity. We have a strong relationship with University of Michigan, Michigan State, Wayne State, through the STEM Scholars Program, but creating these pathways will be just another option for our students. HBCUs have a longstanding history of access. We know the founding of HBCUs was because African Americans, African Americans and other minorities could not go to public colleges or universities. But we also know community colleges are about open access, too. We talk about first-generation college students, low-income students of color have provided access for those populations as well. So that's in common. Also, community colleges are about affordability. HBCUs are as well. When you compare HBCUs tuition compared to similar colleges and universities, their tuition is lower. The last thing about HBCUs, STEM. They're very, very well-respected for STEM, preparing students for those careers, the small classroom environments, the faculty, but then also placing them into jobs after they graduate. And then sense of belonging is the last piece. So that's why we wanted to create those pathways. So what is the HBCU Pathway Program until, well, you get support? Once a student comes here, they get support from our staff and faculty. Soon as they submit an interest form saying they want to be a part of the pathway initiative, we reach out to them, we schedule a meeting. We have monthly workshops where we're introducing them to all of our services on campus, whether it's counseling, we might have a minority mental health session, our learning comments, talking about study skills and strategies. And then we bring local alumni that went to HBCUs on campus to share their experiences as well. We have other events. So there's a supportive network here. That doesn't stop there. Once they're getting ready to transfer, we connect them with those support measures there, too, as well. Next is guaranteed admission. Once a student completes their degree, they get guaranteed admission at that college. And then lastly, most of our partners offer in-state tuition as well. And I'll talk about that more on the next slide. So we have seven partners. This year, we were able to add Alabama A&amp;M University, and then Central State, which is very exciting because Central State is only four hours away, which is our closest HBCU, right in Wilberforce, Ohio. If you look at the tuition of all of our partners, it's an average of about $9,500. But being a part of the HBCU Pathway Initiative, you get that in-state tuition benefit, which could save you anywhere from $2,000 to $5,900 a year. I will point out that public schools in Alabama are not able to provide in-state tuition. However, what they've done, they've offered transfer scholarships in lieu of that. And that's because of state legislature, they can't do that. So we have some superstars at the colleges right now. Zariah Miller is at Jackson State University, and Elizabeth Piriman is at Central State University. Both of them are doing very well. Zariah, she just pledged a sorority called Alpha Kappa Alpha. I'll explain a little bit about the Divine Nine Sororities and Fraternities later on. And then Elizabeth Piriman is an honor student, and she gets a $3,500 scholarship. Those students were a part of the founding of the HBCU Pathway Initiative. They did a lot of promotion of the program, spreading awareness. So it doesn't stop there during the summers. They've came back to our outreach events that we go to the community. They've came back to help us spread the word. And then even on Zoom, they've mentored and told students about their experiences at the colleges, too. Kayla Ross is another student. She, when we launched the program, she was at North Carolina A&amp;T. She reached out, she started having virtual sessions with our students, telling our students about her experience. But as she graduated, we started helping her with grad school. So right now, she's in the process of going to grad school. She's selecting which college she's going to go to, but she's going to be a physician's assistant. She graduated from North Carolina A&amp;T. So currently, right now, we have 36 students we're working with. They're all different stages. So some of them will be transferring over the next semester, over the next course of the year. But what they do, you'll see pictures of them there and study, weekly study sessions. We have a cohort of students, they study every Tuesday, even during the summer, they're studying right now. And then we have those workshops and those events I told you about earlier. And since 2021, 148 students from WCC have transferred to HBCU. So a couple of years ago, we talked about the Community Priority Fund. We received that grant from the county. And a portion of that grant was to provide more awareness of our HBCU Pathway Initiative and provide more exposure amongst the county and our students. So what we did, we came up with a very creative idea, which was HBCU Day. And we just wanted to provide a HBCU cultural experience here on campus beyond what our community, what our students could see and feel in their everyday reality. So we were able to do that. This is the last year of that grant. It expires this year, but we did that twice. On May 3rd, last month, we had over 400 students here on campus. And that came from nine schools from around the county. So Ypsilanti Community Schools and our Republic Schools, Lincoln and Belleville. A central piece of that funding is we were able to provide bus transportation for them to come to campus. Plymouth Canton, they provided their own transportation, but they came as well. Right now, we're following up with students, gauging their interests, talking about dual enrollment, are applying to the college, and then giving them a highlight what some of our upcoming HBCU Pathway initiatives might be. I have to give a huge thank you to all the staff, faculty, and the community members that stepped up and volunteered that day. It's a very intensive day. It's a long day. It starts, students get here, start getting here as early as 8:00, 8:30, but they're here until about 2:00 PM that day. So there's workshops all throughout the day, but we have a lot of hands on deck. Definitely in the community, members from HBCUs that went to, HBCUs that graduated, then local Divine Nine fraternity and sorority members, they came to kind of help out with that day, too. I also want to give a huge thank you to our marketing team. Over the past few years, all of these platforms has covered the HBCU Pathway Initiative. And then this year, we got national attention with Inside Higher Education. They did an interview, and they talked about the HBCU Day and then the Pathway as well. So thank you to our marketing team. So next, I'm going to show a quick glimpse of what HBCU Day looks like.
Okay, awesome. So you guys know how you can do that starting next semester? Dual enrollment, okay? If you guys start at Washington, dual enrollment next semester, you are already underway. Ready to receive. Okay, do you guys realize that? You can be a part of our east ward, so if you guys wanted to game.
How many people in here have filled out the class?
You need something, somebody will drive you out. You've been around them and come and back. So no, but yes, we are four hours away.
Hi, this is David Popper and Ms. Ripoll from the illustrious Alabama Albert Polygraph at the Council University.
So as you see, it was a very exciting day. A couple of things I'll point out is, with our new partnership with Central State, you'll see President Blanca, she signed the agreement with Central State, with Central State's leadership. So that was a great part of that day. But also, they brought their band up to play that day. So they had a full performance for the students. And then at the end, what you see is, those are the Divine Nine Sororities and Fraternities. Many of them were started at HBCUs. And people like Dr. Martin Luther King, our vice president Kamala Harris, both went to HBCUs, but also part of the Divine Nine Sororities and Fraternities. And what they do is stroll-offs. And these are a friendly competition, so that's why there's all excitement. But each sorority and fraternity, not only do they have their own colors, but they also have their different strolls. These are a routine of choreography and dance movements that they've been doing for a long time, some of them since their inception as early as 1906. So they've been going on a long time, but it's something that they really looked forward to, and that kept up our events. So I'm just excited about the community that came to support, the students that are very excited, and our team that helped us put on that day. So, thank you. Oh, and Trustee Milliken, you were there as, yeah, you were there as well. So thank you. Thank you for coming to support that day, to the celebration that we had, so.
A lot of energy there. It was good to be there.
Yes, thank you.
Trustee D'Varity?
Will, will HBCU Day happen in 2025?
So we're doing the planning for that right now. Of course, the Community Priority Fund, it was grant-funded. So we're right now gathering our sources, and we have a date set, so we're just planning for it right now.
Yes. And you're just lining up funding for it, or is that funding already in place?
Absolutely. We're putting together the funding.
Okay, and what's the date?
We're looking at April... Give me a second. Friday, April 25th.
And then I noticed the high schools, Plymouth Canton is not in Washington County. But they, do you have a sense how many students came? Have we seen enrollments at WCC from Plymouth Canton?
So Plymouth Canton, there is a strong connection with WCC because many people from YPSY have either have moved there, or their students go there, their children go there. I just know that from living in the area. As far as our enrollment from Plymouth Canton, I'll have to get back to you on that, if anyone.
So yes, we've had increasing enrollments from Plymouth Canton, and we now have a middle college partnership with them. And so they're starting to have those students enroll in the middle college as well.
So I know we have differential rates based on if you're in county resident or not. Do we get, I know for middle college, the middle college gets the reimbursement from the state per student. They get a student-per-student allocation from the state. But, and that covers their classes here as well, right?
Correct. And they're charged, if they're an out-of-district student, they're charged out-of-district tuition.
Okay, thank you.
Trustee McKnight Morton?
I shouldn't even say anything because my, I'm just so outdone of what you have accomplished here in this program. It is exquisite. And I don't know about other community colleges and their diversity area, but this needs to be packaged. You're doing a really good job. And I really like you yourself, because you are so passionate to make sure that this program will not only succeed, but it will keep growing. And I don't know if the rest of the people know, but Dr. Reed is in the community a lot. He makes sure that his people are there with him. If he's not there, they're there. And I think this really shows that your commitment to this school and its mission is right on top. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Trustee Millschey?
I think I asked the same question last year, and we'd added more schools since last year. Is there any plan to add additional schools coming into this next academic year?
Great question. Again, kudos to our marketing team. After we got that spread, we had a few schools reach out to us already. So in the next couple of weeks, I'll be meeting with at least two schools, so.
Awesome, thank you.
President Blanca?
Thank you, Dr. Reed. Outstanding. And I'd just like to remind the board, because I'm really excited about this. You may recall three years ago, I think it was three years ago, we were on the stage, and Dr. Reed gave the presentation on HBCUs. And you suggested several things, and he did them all. So I just want to remind you of what you gave to us, and also how he followed up on all of your suggestions. So, thank you, Dr. Reed.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
All right, thank you all.
You're welcome.
I just want to
Go ahead.
Say something positive about this sort of a program. And I know because of demographic trends, all community colleges and universities are struggling with enrollment levels. And it has a huge impact on the budgets of these educational institutions. And a program like this, where you've already put 400 students that have, by coming to WCC and moved through our, matriculated through our program, they're now in HBCUs or have graduated from HBCUs. But those are over 400 people that have come here to WCC because of this program, many of them. And it's one of the many things that I know we're doing here, but an important thing that we're doing to counteract the effective demographic trends and to maintain the level of our enrollment, which maintains our economic health at the college. So I really want to thank you and this program as playing that vital role in keeping the college economically healthy.
Thank you, trustee.
I don't want to be a mercenary totally about it, because there's a lot of great things, but it also has some tremendous economic benefit to the college.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Reed. Appreciate it. Free College Week, VP Marusi? Marusi, please forgive me.
That's okay. Good evening, trustees. It's my pleasure to meet with you this evening to give you a brief overview of what happened at this year's Free College Week. Just to give you a background again and remind you, the purpose of Free College Week is to provide value to WCC's constituents, to engage the Washington County Citizens Business and K-12 Audiences, to position WCC as the community's college, support the college's brand through awareness and engagement, and also deliver a free, high-quality, and fun teaching and learning experience. The key stakeholders that we're targeting for this specific activity are taxpayers, our community, business, K-12, potential students and influencers, and donors. This is kind of a collage of some pictures. This year, we added the day portion of Free College Week back into the program. It had been missing from the time that we had COVID, and we decided this was a good time this year to add that back in. People were asking for it, and so we ended up putting together a Saturday program also.
I'm sorry, you said you put what back into the program?
The Saturday program, the on-ground, in-person Saturday programming.
Okay.
So in terms of registration, we had 926 unduplicated headcount. 311 of that number was just for the Saturday in-person session. And then 5,041 enrollments, and 515 of those enrollments only for the Saturday sessions. There were 69 classes, again, 17 were specifically for the Saturday, 137 sections, 27 for Saturday only, and 63 presenters, and 15 for Saturday only. Now, we do not require that people turn in their age, because if we did that, people would hesitate from signing up for a free program at the college. So what we do is, we ask them if they would, rather than give us their birth age, specifically a birth year, if they are so inclined. And from the audience that did provide us with that information, you can see that the large that the large majority of them were forty-one years of age and older. There were a hundred and eleven Michigan cities that participated this year from eleven different states. The large majority, of course, were from Michigan and from our county, but there were people from a variety of different states and um, and even southern countries, as you can see here. The top five classes this year, number one, learn the practice of power rest, if that tells you anything. A lot of people were very interested in that. And the one that I really loved was the TED um, WCC talk, the TEDx talk that was uh put together and delivered by Claire Sparklin, who did a fantastic job. It was a power of perspective. Number three, cybersecurity in the home best practices. People obviously are worried about that. Financial goals one oh one, avoiding debt and advance your future with Advance IPSY. So Brandon?
That was yours, so that was very good.
A lot of people were interested in that this year. The survey feedback that we received is for the online portion, the platform was easy to use for the people that reached out and took Free College Week classes, particularly online. Um, another one is really kind of our village mantra, keep up the good work. We heard that uh more than once. Um, this was a fun way to connect to other community uh members and learn a new skill. The TEDx WCC event, amazing. Um, they liked approachability, the detailed campus tour. So you can tell that um there were a number of um comments about being back on campus, so they really liked that portion of Free College Week. It gave us insight into some classes they were interested in. They enjoyed, you know, the topics, the instructors, um and the convenience of online classes. And again, you see, I loved the in-person sessions that they came back. You know, it's a great, friendly, um, fun, um, friendly family event. So it was really nice to be able to have um some sessions back on campus and have people be able to see the campus and the labs and meet our instructors through their great instruction. An indirect added benefit of Free College Week, of course, are for those students um or adults that end up coming and attending, and then they decide that they want to enroll in the college. And from last year, um, we had thirty interested persons um, you know, attend the event and actually come on and register for college credit classes at WCC. So it's always a nice to see how the benefit is added to this through enrollment. However, that really isn't the focus of the event. The focus of the event is to reach back to the community and thank them for all the um, for all the um generosity that they give us and support us. In wrapping up, I'd like to say thank you to all of the people that work on this team. And trust me, it takes an entire institution to make this work. Um, first of all, Lori Moton, Fran LaFour, Rich Rosler, you guys, the whole marketing group, thank you so much. You guys do such a great job and you help so much. In addition to that, Pete Lushkavitz, Linda Blakey, the whole Student Services and Activities Team, Clarence Jennings, that whole group participated. It was a lot of work for everybody to put this on. Um, Rachel Bartsch started with us and got her instructors and other instructors from the non-credit side of the house also to run um training sessions. And also Barb Hoff, I would be remiss if I didn't thank my own secretary, because she carries a lot of burden with some of the work that's done on the platform. They helped me get things ready. So with that, can I answer any questions?
Yes. Trustee DeBarty?
So a lot of these classes were distance learning, like online classes.
Mm-hmm.
Are, some of them, I don't know if the TED Talk might be one, but are some of them possible that we could put them up as an asynchronous class that people could access free through our YouTube channel? Or to create something through our website? I know we have a YouTube channel, right?
Yeah, we talked about doing that, and you know, one of the things that we're required to do is to make sure that for ADA compliance, that we're able to um script that out so people can see that. It's very expensive to do that. So that's why we've kind of hesitated to do that, but we've moved into at least allowing for the webinars for people to attend. Um, and also adding back into that on-ground opportunity so people can really come to the campus and see the campus.
Great. Trustee McKnight Morton?
Yeah, okay. You're welcome.
Thank you very much. Thank you. President Blanca?
Thank you, Dr. Marusi, for your leadership in this whole event, and thanks to everyone who participated. It's exciting.
Moving on to mandatory audit communication, VP Barnes?
So as we, uh, good evening first. Uh, as we reach the end of June, we're also reaching the end of our fiscal year. Uh, so at this time of year, uh, starting in first of July, we start closing our books for the year. And along with that starts our audit process. So our audit partner from AHP, um, is Tracy Moon, is going to walk you through the scope of the the audit this year.
Good evening, everyone. Um, as Terry mentioned, I'm just going to go through the scope of the audit for uh twenty twenty-four. First of all, the, what we do for the college is the um college financial statement audit, and we also do a federal single audit on the grants. So your student financial aid and any other federal funding that you're getting, we do an audit of that. Um, I'd like to remind the board that our responsibility is to provide opinion on those um services. The financial statements and the compliance of the federal grants, that rests with management with your oversight. It rests with the college. We're just there to provide an opinion. I also like to remind the board that we do look at internal controls during our procedures. Uh, we do not opine on those, though, so there will be no opinion on internal controls. Uh, we look at them to um determine a way, the way that we want to approach our audit. So if there's really good controls in place, we might test those and reduce substantive testing. If we find that it, um, there's no need to test controls, we would just do extra substantive testing. Um, again, we don't give an opinion on those, but we do look at them. If we find that there is an area that could be strengthened in internal controls, we would definitely communicate, communicate that to management. If we find any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses, those would be actually reported to the board. Um, and and actually, any management letter comments, um, the, the management has actually had those come to the, to the board anyway. So you, it's all full disclosure, um, but not required. Um, a couple of other things I wanted to mention is that there is judgment in an audit based on materiality and the number of transactions and the areas that we test. So we do go through a risk-based approach to determine what areas of the audit we're going to test um, and what our materiality levels um will be, and those change every year. It's just good to know that we're, like, I, I just like to, to make sure that you know that we're not testing every single transaction and those kind of things. Um, it is based on a judgment. Again, um, we will have communications later on in September with the board, um, when we uh wrap up the audit. If anything major comes up, in the meantime, I would definitely be reaching out if I needed to. Uh, we've been auditing the college for three years, and I've never had to do that. Actually, I don't think I've ever had to do that um in my entire career, so um with anybody. Management here is really good to work with, and they provide us all the information that we need. We will make inquiries um of the board and management and others within the college regarding fraud. So maybe some of you have been contacted in the past with a fraud questionnaire. We do that every year. We try to um rotate people around who are asking, uh, but we do look at that um and take it very serious. We actually met with management a few uh weeks ago. We talked about planning, um, any new changes at the college, what they're expecting the financial statements to look at like, and those kind of things. Uh, we will be starting our interim testing, which we call planning, in July, as Terry mentioned. And then we'll be back out in August to finish up the audit. I mentioned earlier that we do do a risk assessment. Um, management override of controls and improper revenue recognition are two risks that are automatically, uh, that we automatically put into our audit for all audits. Um, so those items are scrutinized throughout the entire audit. Uh, we also identified compliance with federal grant requirements as an, an additional risk for the college. Um, as part of our staffing, we have an IT specialist on staff. He will come out and he will do some questionnaires and walk through some IT processes uh with your IT folks. Uh, we don't give an opinion on any, any, any kind of IT items. We don't issue a report, but it just helps us on the audit determine, to help us determine what kind of transactions we need to test and what kind of work we're going to do. There are no new accounting pronouncements this year. Yay, I'm sure every, all the management back here is excited about that. No new accounting pronouncements that we have to worry about. So we're just looking kind of to um continue on what we were doing last year. And um, there are some coming up that management is working on, though, and those will be implemented in future years. I mentioned the, the college audit and the single audit, the, the federal audit. We also audit the foundation. Um, that's a, under a separate scope letter, and we do their uh federal nine ninety and nine ninety T. Um, and then in addition to that, we assist with the preparation of the financial statements um and the reports that go out. Based on all the services that we provide, we are independent um under our standards. So I'd just like to make sure that you understand that we are independent from the college and we can perform these services. And then lastly, our staffing really has not changed as far as our, our management team. Um, I've been here since the inception that we, when we started. Um, and our, our other partners are still here and are in charges. Um, she's coming back this year, and it's always nice to have that consistency. Um, I think management appreciates it, and it just gives a little bit of clarity and not so much work on their part, that we can just kind of jump in, so. Um, that's all I have. We're really looking forward to being back on campus this year. Um, and I would like to open up to any questions and also let you know that if you ever have any concerns with the audit or um questions, you can always reach out to me. I'm available whenever, whenever you'd like to talk.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to monthly reports. Tab B. Monthly Personnel Recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve the personnel recommendation as submitted. Do I hear motion?
Moved.
Any discussion? Was it?
Was there a second? Support.
Okay, thank you.
No discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Move on to tab C. Twenty twenty-four, twenty-five Appointment of the President and Chief Executive Officer. The recommendation is that the Board of Trustees extend the appointment of Dr. Rose B. Blanca as President and Chief Executive Officer to June thirty, twenty twenty-seven. That her twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five salary be set at two hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars. That she receives a seven thousand dollar increase to her miscellaneous expenses annual payment. That she receives a bonus payment equal to two point five percent of her salary payable on June thirty, twenty twenty-five. And that the Chair of the Board of Trustees be authorized to sign a contract with Dr. Blanca on behalf of the board. Do I hear a motion?
Moved.
Any discussion? Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Davis?
Yes.
Vice Chair Milliken?
Yes.
Treasurer DeBarty?
DeBarty, yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight Morton?
Yes.
Trustee Millschine?
Yes.
Moving on to tab D, twenty twenty-four, twenty-five.
May I say some?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Um, I'd like to thank the board for your vote of confidence. And um, you know, I think I'm as speechless today as I was the first day when you hired me. So, and the passion is still here. As a matter of fact, it even grows more and more because we have a great community. We have outstanding faculty, staff, students, and a good board, and we've accomplished a lot together. We really, really have. And all of the accolades that we've received is because of everyone's energy, and I'm grateful for that. So I was able to succeed because of you and because of you. So, thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Tab D, twenty twenty-four, twenty-five Independent Staff Salary Adjustments. Tab D is a recommendation that the Board of Trustees approve a three percent adjustment to all independent staff salary and wage rates and an additional midpoint factor adjustment to independent staff salary and wage rate that are below market rate midpoint for the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year. Do I hear a motion?
So move.
Support.
Any discussion? Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Davis?
Yes.
Vice Chair Milliken?
Yes.
Treasurer DeBarty?
DeBarty, yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight Morton?
Yes.
Trustee Millschine?
Yes.
Moving on to tab E. Twenty twenty-four, twenty-five Part-Time Staff and Coaches Wage Rates. Tab E is the recommendation that the Board of Trustees approve the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five Part-Time Support Staff and Club Sports Coaches Salary as submitted. Do I hear a motion?
It's a move.
Support.
Any discussion? Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Davis?
Yes.
Vice Chair Milliken?
Yes.
Treasurer DeBarty?
DeBarty, yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight Morton?
Yes.
Trustee Millschine?
Yes.
Moving on to tab F. Twenty twenty-four, twenty-five Part-Time Faculty Wage Rates. The recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five Part-Time Faculty Wage Rates as submitted. Do I hear a motion?
A move.
Moved.
Support.
Any discussion? Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Davis?
Yes.
Vice Chair Milliken?
Yes.
Treasurer DeBarty?
DeBarty, yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight Morton?
Yes.
Trustee Millschine?
Yes.
Tab G, the financial reports for May twenty twenty-four. Before we vote on the financial reports, VP Barnes, are there any additional items you'd like us to know about?
Yeah, I'll just hit a couple of um highlights. So just starting with the spring tuition, uh, as we close out the fiscal, the fiscal year, uh, you can see that our spring tuition is running about a hundred and forty-three thousand ahead of budget. So spring has gone, spring summer has gone very well. Uh, this number could move around a little bit. We do a pretty precise calculation at the end of the year because we have uh certain classes that fall before June thirtieth and certain classes that fall after July first. So we have to put the earnings related to each of those classes in their respective fiscal years. Uh, so that takes a little bit of a precise calculation, so that number should move a little bit, but it's generally a positive, positive number. And total tuition and fees, you can see, uh, should be largely baked at this point in the year. A little good news on the state appropriations, the personal property tax that we received in May came in uh higher than we expected. So for the year, it was about six hundred thousand dollars higher uh than we expected. Um, so that was good news. There's a little bit more upside through the end of the year, but that seven point four million should be right about, right around there, maybe slightly better uh by the end of the month, when you see the final, final numbers. Expenditures, uh, you can see here that we're running four point two million dollars under budget. Uh, there's still, this is as of the end of May, so there's still one month left uh as of these numbers for everyone to uh try to spend what they do have, if they're going to spend it by the end of the year. Uh, in all likelihood, uh, some of this will remain, of course. Which takes me to the, the, the expected surplus down here. I just wanted to point it out to you because I'll be back later to, to propose uh to the board what to do uh with that uh expected surplus. I also wanted to highlight for you, on, this is on the capital fund. I just wanted to highlight, there's a, a minor number here, this ninety thousand dollars that we've added. Uh, this was to do some scoping work on the EV battery lab, and you'll hear more about that this evening later. Uh, it's an additional agenda item, but I just wanted to point that out, uh, because you'll see this proposal related to this uh project. That's really all I had, unless there's any questions.
Questions? Trustee Millschine?
Um, same question as I think I asked at the last meeting. Um, maybe Provost Blakey will be the better one. How are we doing for uh fall enrollment? It looked like it was, we're on track or, or better than on track?
Yeah, fall enrollment, um, I believe we are close to eight percent up in enrollment, and I think it's six point two percent up in credit hours. Uh, so it's uh, it's trending very, very well.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Great, thank you very much. Do I hear a motion?
I move we accept the financial reports for May as submitted, general fund, capital fund, combined schedule of investments.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good evening. I'll just touch on a few projects that are underway or about to. Under the capital projects, the campus-wide camera upgrade project kicked off this month. Work began in the Gundermeyer Building. If you recall, the scope of this project was to replace a lot of old antiquated analog cameras with new digital, and also expand on adding additional cameras for greater coverage. So work began in the GM Building. Work involved is electrical roughing work, a lot of network cabling. This week, they're actually installing cameras, and we'll start making some connections as early as next week. Over the course of the summer and fall, they'll continue to move across campus and do this in every building as well as areas outside. The goal is to have this program, project, ready to go live in December. Deferred Maintenance. If you take a look at project number 17, Student Center Restroom Renovation, those documents are done, so we have what are called construction documents. They're finished, they're going to go up for bid. The scope of this project, there's a total of 16 bathrooms in the student center, and essentially, everything in these bathrooms is going to get replaced. The floors, the ceiling, counters, sinks, and all the plumbing fixtures. That package will go up for bid. We'll get the pricing back, and we're looking for a start of construction in fall. And then, lastly, each month, the Health and Fitness Center has an August shutdown for one week, and we in facilities get in and do a number of projects. The projects that we're going to do this summer during that shutdown are all tied to the strategic plan within the Health and Fitness Center. The major projects include a refresh of the interior, painting and carpeting, a new flooring throughout, lighting upgrade, changing a lot of lighting to LED. We're going to refinish the gym floor. We're going to replace the platform tennis with a pickleball court. And then there's some work to be done in the pool with heating panels, or some radiant panels that need to be replaced for comfort heating. That concludes my report. Are there any questions?
Trustee Millschain?
So I see that we have issued, we've made payment on the space utilization and optimization study. Do we have a timeline at this point of when they kick it off and when we'll get a final report?
So we'll probably kick that off sometime this month of July. There's a lot of work that will probably happen in August with listening sessions, so the bulk of that work will probably start towards the end of the summer. And I would think we'd have reports, a draft report by November or late fall.
Okay. Thank you.
I see that on number 15, the Great Lakes Building, the exterior step replacement, that it is under design. How is that coming along?
It's coming well. The design is nearly complete. We're going to go up for pricing. We want to start that work in like the third week of August after all of the big trade events. But it is on schedule to be replaced late summer, being like the third week of August.
And would that also include, and I'm referring to the previous report that you had delivered about that building, if I'm not mistaken? Or correct me if, it might be a different building that had the water drainage on the walls? Is that the same building or was it a different?
Different projects. So the Great Lakes Regional Training Center, the steps that go from the parking lot on the north side up to the building, they're going to get replaced. So that's project number 15. We have a number of waterproofing projects going on around campus, ML, Great Lakes. Included in that is a study of where we're going to look at those metallic, the problems that we have with our precast concrete.
All right. Good. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So there's nothing else? Thank you.
I just want to say, my comment, then I'm not commenting now, but I did at our session before we came in to VP. So he answered my question. I don't want to say what it is.
Bathrooms?
Yes.
It's in the project. It's, we will hopefully have a schedule to share later this summer on the whole restroom project.
Great. Thanks.
Thank you.
To me, thank you.
Now, moving on to remarks of the members of the Board of Trustees. Anyone have any remarks you'd like to share? Well, unfortunately, I have nothing to share.
Unfortunately.
I don't, I don't. But all I can say is just been hot, and I hope that everyone is staying safe, staying hydrated, and doing their best to just stay cool and be mindful of the weather announcements. So that's all that I have. President Blanca?
Yes, thank you. Well, it was mentioned about the 13, thank you very much, Ellie, about the 13 faculty members that we hired. And you know, hiring employees, faculty, is one of the most important things that we do. In doing that, we make a large investment, not only in individuals, but in the college, which is why we look for the best that we can find. So I appreciate the work that VP Tucker has done in terms of making sure this gets done, but HR, you really, Chris, you really moved it up. And you were always great, but I mean, you really put this new process in place, and you did a great job. I'd like to thank all the faculty and staff members that served on all the committees because that's, it's time-consuming, and everyone took it very, very seriously, as they should. So thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. I think, well, you'd also probably like to know that we are interviewing for our Vice President of Liberal Arts and Sciences. Those interviews will probably take place within the next two weeks, and we're looking forward to that as well. We have some strong candidates, so that'll be good. We also have our CHRO, Chief Human Resource Officer. We have offered someone a position, he has accepted, and we're anxious to introduce him to everyone here at the Board. So we're making progress, so thanks. Also, Juneteenth, another great, a great celebration. Thank you so much. Again, Dr. Reed, for all that you did. I also would like to thank Trustee McKnight Morton and Trustee Alex Millschain for attending that day. So thank you so much. It was a great event. Thank you. Okay, I have a lot of things to tell you. Right now, we have a very exciting program going on, and you know, everyone talks about the talent pipeline, and there's a lot of concern because things like semiconductors and learning about semiconductors. If a student in middle school, they don't know that there's a career in semiconductors. So what we have done, which is really exciting, is that we are now working with 15-area middle school math and science teachers who are spending the week here at WCC to gain knowledge of semiconductors and take part in panels with experts, have some tours and hands-on activities. And then they're learning how to do semiconductor circuit training. I don't know, math must have changed. I'm sure math has, right? I mean, now it's hands-on, too. And so they will be learning that, and then they're going to go back with kits that they can use with their classes. So I'm very excited about that, and I'm happy to hear that, and thank you to everyone who's involved in that program. Our trade unions are back. We're expecting about 5,000 members to, this is our busy season. You know, summer's really busy. So again, thank you, Dr. Marusi, Marilyn Dunham, as well as VP Tucker. Our plasters and cement macers are here, cement macers are here right, oh, roofers are here right now. Roofers are here right now. So we'll be, we're going to be moving. So this is very exciting. UA is celebrating seven to five years of their instructor training, and 35 years were held here at WCC. This is, I promise I won't keep talking about it when it's over because I know this is a complete campus initiative. Our faculty teach, I'm looking at Ellie because she's teaching in the program, we have other faculty members that teach, everyone's involved, everyone. Facilities, grounds, IT, everyone, conference services. So it really does take every single person to make that work. And again, the economic impact's over $20 million to our community, and for that, we're really grateful. And last, I'm, drum roll, I know, I'm really excited about this. This is probably, you know, a president, this is probably the only thing I ever asked for, and I actually got, I didn't have to go for a vote, I don't think. Now I'll probably get in trouble for this. Okay, guess what? Guess what? Ready? Well, you know, we now have a, we're going to have a sign on our building, on our student, on our student center, and it's going to say Washinaw Community College. And so we're going to actually have one. I'm thrilled with that. And I'd like to thank Diane, Diane, Diane O'Connell. Actually, had a great meeting with her from the township, talked to her about the sign variation. We had lunch and discussed it, and then I'd like to also thank VP Beschi and his group for meeting with them. They had to look at the variation and make some changes to allow it because that's probably why student success, that success in her sign was so miniscule, small, because that's about all they would allow. So we are going to have a sign. So I'm very excited about that.
Just to clarify, it needed a vote and a variance from the township.
Yes, it did, and they gave it to us.
So we had to actually convince them of the benefits to the community of this sign.
I had lunch with her, and Jim Beschi and his team met with them.
Thank you for breaking that down.
I serve on the Ann Arbor Zoning Board of Appeals, and we deal with sign variances on that board. And I know it's quite a fraught consideration that the people coming to us have to make for their signs because we're not very liberal at granting variances, because that's in the city of Ann Arbor.
Well, they're not either.
This is the township of, this is Ann Arbor Township.
Ann Arbor Township, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
They're probably harder to get than the city of Ann Arbor.
But they were very kind to us. I mean, it was really very good. They saw the need for a sign. I mean, come on, it's Washinaw Community College. See a sign on the building. People ask us, where's your front door? I don't know. Now we have one. So we're excited about that.
Well, that is great news. That is great news, yeah.
Look at that.
Yeah, can drive by and say, yes.
Yeah.
I know that place. All right, so let's move on to tab I. It's part of Old Business. Managed Services Contract. It's the recommendation that the Board of Trustees approves a five-year technology managed services renewal contract commencing July 29, 2024, in the fixed amount of $6,561,504 per year. Total cost, $32,807,520. And a Banner SaaS Enterprise Modernization Transition Cloud Five-Year Software Services Contract commencing July 29, 2024, in the average amount of $1,019, how does that go? Thank you. The zero threw me off. I'm sorry, forgive me. Forgive me. It's been a long day. Per year, total cost, $5,097,500 with Elution Company LLC. Funding is available in the operating budget to support this recommendation. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Any discussion? Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Davis?
Yes.
Vice Chair Milliken?
Yes.
Treasurer D'Arati?
D'Arati, yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight Morton?
Yes.
Trustee Millschain?
Yes.
Excellent. Move on to tab J. Target X Customer Relationship Management Systems CRM Contract Renewal. Now, this is an action item. An action item? Yes, it is an action item. Yes, it is. The recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve a three-year contract renewal with Target X in the amount not to exceed $302,100. $302,100. $10700 billed annually with annual renewal options to provide the student lifecycle relationship management CRM software for recruitment and retention. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Any discuss, oops.
Support.
Any discussion? Vanessa, please call the roll.
I just want to quick say something. For the, anybody that's watching this on video or the assembled masses out here, we're passing these pretty quickly, but we have looked at these, and they were brought to us at the last meeting, both the one before this and this, and we asked a number of questions, which we got answers to. So I don't want people to think that we're just automatically rubber-stamping things without consideration. Just a point I'd like to make as we're approving this pretty much unanimously.
I appreciate that comment.
Thank you, Trustee D'Arati. Appreciate the clarification on that. Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Davis?
Yes.
Vice Chair Milliken?
Yes.
Treasurer D'Arati?
D'Arati, yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight Morton?
Yes.
Trustee Millschain?
Yes.
We're moving on to tab K. This is now under New Business. Tab K is Honorlock Remote Proctoring Contract. Interim VPI, Dr. Brandon Tucker.
Good evening. Before you is a recommendation for a new proctoring software. You might remember in 2021, during the COVID era, we came to the Board and asked for approval to enter a contract with Examity. And what we found over the last three years, that while Examity was a decent tool that provided online proctoring, there were a number of misses and opportunities that we wanted to try to solve for. Before you is a recommendation to enter a contract with Honorlock, which over the last semester, we've had it piloted with two of our largest disciplines, both economics and math, to see how this tool works, is it going to be better for students? And what we found is that Honorlock is far more superior than our existing tool Examity. But some key benefits to Honorlock is that it's available 24/7, 365 days a year to our students, as well as to our faculty for support. But then also, it has the latest tools that speak to artificial intelligence to ensure that the testing environment is safe, and that both our faculty and our students are comfortable with the overall usability of the tool. So it's a lot easier, a lot cleaner, and provides additional supports that our current tool Examity does not, does not have. So it is our recommendation that we would enter a three-year contract with Honorlock. It is both currently tested in our Blackboard environment. It has a seamless transition as we move over to our Canvas environment over the next six months. And I'll answer any questions that the Board might have.
Trustee McKnight Morton?
It's probably going to be quite obvious of what I'm going to say, but do you know firsthand, or your staff, how this system works so that it would be almost, nothing is full of proof, but that it actually works like they say it does?
We do. And we have, you know, of course, had an incident in which we filed a student who was not doing the right thing, and it worked. We were able to counsel that student, the faculty- And it worked. We were able to counsel that student. The faculty was engaged and it was actually, the good thing about Honorlock is that it activates live proctoring. So if I'm inside of a browser and I'm trying to take a test and I decide that I want to look at my iPhone, it will bring in a live proctor in that moment and say, you know, trustee McKnight Morton, what are you doing? We can see that you're using your phone. So, and that is one of the far greater tools that this service has that we are not getting at Examity. But yes, it has been tested. We have seen its use.
One more thing to that. So if that happens, what happens to that student? Are they expelled out?
They're not expelled. It would depend on the situation. Sometimes it's a false positive, right? So they think that something's going on. One example that we were talking to faculty earlier today was they were, a student was scared because their three-year-old daughter ran into the room and kind of got them distracted. In those cases, a proctor would come in, but then, you know, you're able to have those conversations with the faculty to be able to say, okay, you know, it wasn't what we thought. But in the cases in which we do have, just like academic integrity, we would do it to students appropriately. There is due process. They would be expelled.
Thank you. Trustee Dovardi?
So you've piloted this with two departments, economics and mathematics, which are fairly large departments. I'm wondering how the transition went with the course, with the faculty and transitioning into this new system? And if you see any issues or what kind of timeline it'll take to transition across all of our coursework?
With the faculty, we piloted the entire winter semester and then still kind of extended that pilot to the spring, summer. The first pilot was just those two sections in math and econ. Over the summer, we expanded to all those sections with those two instructors. And just even today, we had a conversation, they're constantly giving us feedback. And the good thing about Honorlock is that there, our account rep is on top of, hey, we need to, you know, maybe change this or modify this. So there's a constant back and forth communication. In terms of the transition, it'll be seamless. Because right now Examity is a outside tool. So if you think about, you're taking a test, you would have to go to an additional browser to log in. With Honorlock, it essentially will take your current browser and essentially start monitoring it. So for students and for faculty, it's easier because they're not having to go through a whole nother tool and a whole nother login. So we see that the transition will be very, very seamless and will be able to start in the fall if approved by the board.
I'm, I'm less worried about the seamless nature of the browser transition than I am about faculty being familiar with this and having a comfort level to feel comfortable with it in their class situations. So what have you seen with the pilots that you've got?
It's far easier because what faculty would have to do was that they would have to program and work with that external login. With this, it essentially allows them to do it right in Blackboard or right in Canvas. So there's no additional login required. So for faculty, they won't see, it'd actually be a lot easier for them because it's essentially their Blackboard shell or their Canvas shell. And for students, just as easy, right? Because they're logging into their course and right there, they'll be able to have the integration with Honorlock.
So they don't have to do anything different. They don't have to learn anything new. It's just doing exactly what they did before, only they don't have to go to an outside browser?
Correct.
Okay.
So it's, will for them, both students and faculty be significantly easier?
Thank you.
Yep.
See McKnight Morton?
Just a quick follow up. So how the, these two faculty, how did they feel about this program that they've been working with?
They, they like it and they want to change it. So they have both a, they see the positives and they see things that they would like to change. We actually have taken their feedback and we're actually working with Honorlock to look at how we may be able to support some of the things they would like to improve. They, both faculty and students do see that Honorlock is far better than Examity. That's a consistent. What the thing that we're solving for now is some of the additional things that they want to see the tool do, that we have to work with Honorlock to see how we can make that happen.
So there's no, well, let me ask you this. You said that there's a good and a bad here, positive and negative, and they want to change some of the negative, right? So are they able to do that with Honorlock? Or how does that, how would that work?
That is our goal. I mean, some things like with any tool, we wish we could change kind of the structure or interface. So there are some things that are limited, maybe how things show up on the screen. But what we can change are maybe some of the additional things they want to see with how Adobe files are able to be monitored or represented is just one example.
Okay, okay, great. Thank you. It sounds like a good program.
So a follow-up to trustee McKnight Morton. So there are changes we're working on with Honorlock, with the company, that we're trying to integrate into the system. You're presenting us a contract price for three years for $272,000. Now I work with contractors in a construction environment. And anytime you make changes, there are change orders that add to the price. Are we going to see change orders that add to the price or is, and I'm just worried when we encounter an obstacle that can't be adequately addressed or improved upon to the satisfaction of the faculty. What do we do about that?
To answer the first part, there are no change orders. That is one of the advantages with Honorlock is, for one, the level of customer service, both to faculty and kind of the administrative side for support, where they're listening and constantly looking to make those improvements for us. In addition, which I did note, was Examity is limited at the amount of tests that can be proctored because of cost. So they charge us per test and there's certain levels where there's no live proctoring all the way up to live proctoring. With Honorlock, it's essentially the Cadillac of proctoring. So we get the highest level, which can include live proctoring at no additional cost. And that is one of the greatest features that we find. Because now, because of cost, faculty could only maybe do two tests within econ, for example. Now they could do three or four at kind of the full level of proctoring. In terms of things that we can't solve for, as we even had a conversation today, we're working to those collaboratively, right? I mean, some of it is, you know, we can change the system, but only change the system so much. So what can we do on our end to maybe look at new ways of measuring and assessing that may not be in the traditional way that we've been doing it? And of course, both faculty and the team are committed to working together to make sure we have the greatest experience for our online students, knowing this is one of our growth areas.
So I guess, just a clarification, we pay this price and with the previous system, we had to pay on a per-test basis and if it exceeded a certain amount, we were paying more. This is going to include, let's say we get more students in the classes or, you mentioned if you gave more tests in a class, that's, that's within the thing. If, if we need proctoring across new programs or new classes that we aren't doing proctoring now, or I don't know if that's true or not, does, is that covered in this? That we could just hand in as much as we want, as long as it's, it's all the proctoring for our college, no matter how much proctoring we're asking for?
There is a limit. What we have factored in is essentially double of what we currently use, which we believe both for the proctoring for academic instruction as well as we're using this for our placement testing, for, you know, the writing samples that assuming that we would double what our current usage is, gets us to this price. And we believe that's well within the range of what we might expect, both for the writing sample increases that we may get as well as additional sections that may want to use this. And it's based upon an FTE rate, so our full-time equivalent students. So it's, it's not essentially like Examity is like a per-piece rate. It's a flat rate for up to a certain amount of students.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, VP, Dr. Tucker. And we're moving on to tab L, the Electric Vehicle Battery Lab Project.
Good evening again. I just want to take a moment to tie this next item back to the budget that you've seen before. In the last fiscal year, you may recall that the federal government approved a grant to the college for just over $2.5 million. And that grant is used to, is going to be used to implement a couple of EV program certificates, which, which also required a battery lab, et cetera. We've, we advised the board last year and the budget last year and as well, we did the budget retreat this year, that the college is going to have to spend a little bit of its own money in addition to the grant. So we always had set aside $1 million to support our costs over and above the 2.5 million granted by the federal government. So Brandon is just going to walk through those programs for you, but I just wanted to tie it back to the budget. We've been, the 30 million that you saw me present earlier of the total projects that we have been planning for, this is 1 million of that 30 million. So you've seen this before.
This is really exciting because you might remember, advanced transportation is something that we've had a strategic vision on over the last decade. And this is, we call it advanced transportation 2.0. Responding to the needs of employers and our students. And as you might remember, in February of this year, we came to the board and you approved both certificate and associate's degree programs that are in development and launching soon where they need a space. And what this recommendation is before you is to establish a fund that would support the renovation of existing space specifically for EV testing as well as battery testing. What's complete, this lab would allow for us to have up to eight electric vehicles at one time in that lab and across two labs and a mezzanine, the ability to service about 30 to 40 students at one time that would be learning both the basics and the safety, as well as the maintenance related to electric vehicles and their respective batteries. This is, as VP Barnes mentioned, is heavily supported primarily by a grant that has allowed our faculty, some for faculty, to be trained over the last eight months across the country, not specific to one manufacturer, but Tesla, Ford, GM, to be able to provide this training for not just our students in the academic certificate and associate's degree programs, but also incoming workers. Because what we found as we've gone out, as you might mentioned a few months ago, remember, we talked about how we're going to dealerships and going to R&amp;D facilities to talk about what are the skills, what are the jobs that are here that are coming? And now, because they know that we have programs launching, space, hopefully they will be able to build out that they're now going to look to send their staff to be retrained. So when we think about a dealer technician, they're, they need to be upskilled as well. So this space will be able to not only train the new entering professionals into the EV BV kind of career field, but also those existing workers that are in transportation, but want to transition over to these new technologies. So with the support of the board, the recommendation is to allow for us to establish a fund that would allow for those programs to be able to launch and have adequate space.
Trustee Dovardi?
So I had the benefit of having my meeting with our CFO before this. So we have, and Terry, I don't know if you want to make this for the rest of the board. We have right now, from this year's budget, a capital fund of $16.5 million. So what we're looking at is that's going to be a balance and we've already budgeted in the budget we approved this year. We already approved next year's budget. So you're saying, you're, this, when it comes to us next year, which will be in the next budget, or next month for approval, it'll, it'll be in the next budget year. Where you're asking us to take a million dollars of that capital fund that's already there and put it into this battery lab?
That's correct.
And so I just, it's not like something sudden, out of the blue, but it's something that's been in the works and there's already the money, a substantial amount of money in the capital fund. And I just want to put that on the table so everybody's aware of that situation.
Trustee Milligan?
I wanted to speak to the timeliness and the importance of this program that VP Tucker is discussing. Kirk Stoudel, who was the head of the Michigan Department of Transportation, previously in the Snyder administration, told me recently that about half of the charging stations that are in place in Michigan are out of order. Big demand. And we're going to help train the people to go out there and fix them so people can get their cars charged. So carry on.
Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to tab M. Replacement of the Palo Alto Enterprise Perimeter Firewalls, CIO Turner?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for entertaining my discussion today. Cybersecurity, the best practices to fight the ever-increasing sophistication of cyber attacks. I have a very relevant example. I, this morning I had a doctor's appointment. I was sitting in the waiting room. The office administrator came and said, we can't do your appointment. And I had a very puzzled look and she said, none of our systems can connect to Beaumont Hospital. The Beaumont system is down. So this is everywhere and touches every facet of our lives. And even more so for us here locally, we have two enterprise perimeter firewalls, one in each of our main data centers. And where they are protecting us from the bad actors getting access to our data and our business-related electronic assets. All external traffic in and out of our campus go through these two devices. So they are at the center of our cybersecurity protection. To be a little more specific, different types of assets are segmented and get different levels of protection. The first and most highest protection is for what's called PII, Personally Identifiable Information. Credit card numbers, student IDs, driver's license numbers, student, or credit cards and other financial information, right? So that gets the highest. Our academic systems get the next level of attention and those include academic services like registering for classes, the LMS, Blackboard, student finances, and so on. And then lastly, at the lowest level of protection, but still requiring some isolation, are public-facing services like the college's website, its guest wifi, and so on. So these firewalls have to be able to provide the level of protection required in the, this new environment, right? So the current Washtenaw firewalls are Palo Alto's. They are seven years old. And the manufacturers have designated them as end of life. So it is extremely important for us to upgrade them so that we can provide the updated protection that's required. So we're proposing to upgrade the campus Palo Alto firewall. So we're proposing to upgrade the campus Palo Alto firewall systems, one in the Student Center data center and one in the LA data center, through a contract with Amerinet of Michigan. And they'll provide the Palo Alto firewall hardware, the software, support, and the needed professional services to properly configure and deploy these. This proposed upgrade has been budgeted and will come out of the IT Infrastructure Fund. There will be a cost, a one-time cost of $359,975. That is for a three-year contract that covers the hardware, all of the software subscriptions, and premium support for the entirety of that contract. Any questions?
I have a question. How is ordering hardware these days? Would it be helpful for you to get a jump on that order?
Yes. In fact, our current support contract expires in September. So by ordering, getting these in, getting them installed before that contract expires would be very beneficial.
Do you think you could implement before fall classes start?
That would be the...
It'd be ideal, but it'd be tight.
And, and yes, that is the goal, and we believe is possible, yes.
Okay. If there's no other comments, I'm willing to make a motion to move this up to current business to vote. If there's no objection...
Do you amend the agenda?
Yeah, I'd like to move that we amend the agenda, agenda to move tab M up to current business for a vote.
I support that.
Okay. Vanessa, please call the roll. Chair Davis?
Yes.
Vice Chair Milliken?
Yes.
Treasurer Devardie?
Devardie, yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight-Morton?
Yes.
Trustee Millschain?
Yes.
Recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve the contract with the Amerinet of Michigan, Inc. to purchase and deploy updated Palo Alto cloud firewall systems for an amount not to exceed $359,975. So I hear a motion. Does it move?
Support.
Vanessa, please call the roll. Chair Davis?
Yes.
Vice Chair Milliken?
Yes.
Treasurer Devardie?
Devardie, yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight-Morton?
Yes.
Trustee Millschain?
Yes.
Thank you so much. We'll get to work.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hey, moving on to tab N, transfer from the general fund to the capital fund. Recommendation, the Board of Trustees approve the transfer of $10 million from the college's general fund to its capital fund to support future projects.
Yeah, just to take you back to my original presentation this evening, you saw that we're likely, very likely to end this year with a surplus. For those of you who've been on the board for many years, you know that these kinds of surpluses are not common. In a sense, they're kind of one-time, if you will, surpluses. So we want to try to match these one-time surpluses with our one-time costs. So as I've mentioned, on many occasions, we have approximately $30 million worth of projects. And as trustee Devardie mentioned a moment ago, we have $16 million set aside, of which we just allocated 1 million to, or we will hopefully allocate 1 billion to the EV battery project. So that leaves an additional 14 million or so to still fund. This would get us 10 million of the way there. So a lot of the projects, we'd have the money set aside. Now, the board will not have directly allocated it yet to specific projects, but it will be set aside. So the, the college will have that money set aside for these future projects. So that's what we're recommending. Are there any questions?
Questions, discussion? Okay. Do I hear a motion?
Got a question?
I'll make the motion, but I want to, just in discussion, I think we, we want to do this now because it's this budget year. So we move it out of this budget, and then it goes to our auditors and audited, and we will, it puts it into that capital fund, and we can distribute it for the capital projects as needed next year. But in order to close up this year's budget, I think is, now is the time to take this out and put it into the capital fund.
Already been moved? Oh, trustee Millschain?
So moving this into the capital fund, are we able to deploy the funds into a CD of some sort so that we're earning interest? What's the plan, or is it just sitting there?
No, we, all of our excess funds are invested. So the funds that we know we're not going to use for several years are invested in long-term bonds. If there's any expected use within the next, in the very near term, those are invested in commercial paper, which right now is getting a very good interest rate. So all, all, all of our money is invested that is in excess. We don't want any of it not working for the college.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. I believe the motion was already...
If not, I'll move, I'll make a motion that we approve the transfer of 10 million from the general fund to the capital fund to support future projects.
Support.
Vanessa, please call the roll. Chair Davis?
Yes.
Vice Chair Milliken?
Yes.
Treasurer Devardie?
Devardie, yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight-Morton?
Yes.
Trustee Millschain?
Yes.
Moving on to tab O, 2024-25 department chair appointments. Tab O, the recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve the 2024-2025 faculty department chair appointments as submitted. Do I hear a motion?
It's moved.
Court, any discussion?
I wish Ruth were here.
Court, do you have a question?
Trustee Millschain?
And I don't know who this question is, maybe Provost Blakely. So I see a lot of departments have two department chairs. Can someone maybe tell me a little about how that workload is separated between the, the two department chairs, and maybe how compensation works in that regard as well? You're, you're in my line of sight immediately, that's why.
So, yes, your departments...
Pick the mic.
Okay, departments, oh, this is a good mic. Departments have long, steady, have the tradition of either having a single department chair or a co-chair. And depending on the department, that, and how we calculate department chair release time and compensation is directly tied to the amount of contact hours that that department generates. And so, for example, if you look at advanced manufacturing technology in ATP Division, that would have a different compensation as well as release time because of the amount of hours they generate in comparison to maybe like humanities languages and the arts in the HSS Division. Departments will then, if they have a co-chair, they will look and see about the workload, and they will either divvy it up evenly, or they will split it corresponding with the amount of work that one co-chair would do versus the other. So like in advanced manufacturing, that's an even split. One of those department co-chairs may handle the budget, may handle kind of the supplies and the inventory. They kind of split it up, but then in other departments, it's really them deciding, okay, who wants to do what? And that would determine how much they split it. It cannot exceed what is allocated for that particular department based upon that credit hour generation, but the departments are, it varies, but that's kind of how it goes.
What else? Okay, do I hear a motion? Vanessa, please call the roll. Chair Davis?
Yes.
Vice Chair Milliken?
Yes.
Treasurer Devardie?
Devardie, yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight-Morton?
Yes.
Trustee Millschain?
Yes.
I would like to entertain a motion to adjourn the monthly meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned.